What happened to Kristen?
She's talking somewhere over there, I thought.
If we can get everybody to take their seats. If I can have your attention, please. The time is 6:03 and we have the presence of a quorum and this meeting has been duly called. A notice for the meeting has been given and the time and manner required by law. We'll begin tonight with our information items. Dr. Dupree?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. We're going to spend this first few minutes tonight talking about our bond program. As you know, when the board took action to approve the bond, the 2014 bond election, we created a bond oversight committee that's been working for the last year or so to help, just provide, I guess, community advisory services and oversight of the district as we execute on this bond program. Stuart Jacobson is the chair of that committee and as required, as the board asked in their, I'm sorry, I'm stumbling over words tonight. As the board asked us to do in their resolution, he's here to present the annual report by the chairperson of the bond oversight committee. In addition, we're going to present to you the most recent update, kind of the annual update that was shared with the oversight committee last Thursday evening. So I'll present, I guess, Max, Steve, and Stuart Jacobson. If you can come up. Stuart, can you sit over here, please?
Good evening. I've prepared a written report which I'd like to read, if I may. The Bond Oversight Committee of the Fort Bend Independent School District was created by the Board of Trustees as an adjunct to the proposed 2014 bond issue. The BOC is composed of district taxpayers chosen by trustees for their expertise in certain professions and disciplines related to the issuance of municipal bonds, the design of district facilities, and the construction of those facilities. Among BOC members are architects, engineers, construction managers, contractors, material suppliers, accountants, bankers, developers, investment advisors, and others. The BOC met initially in advance of trustee approval of the 2014 bond issue to give input into the size and composition of the first phase of the district's multi-phase capital plan. Input received from the BOC assisted the executive team in delineating the phases of the capital plan which will be used for planning future bond proposals. Since approval by district taxpayers in the bond election, the BOC has met at least quarterly. At BOC meetings, district executives and consultants apprise the BOC of, among other issues, scope and details of projects included in the issue, timelines and sub-timelines of each project, progress reports on projects broken into several subcategories including construction management, technology, security, and financial, and also communication with taxpayers and the general public regarding the status of projects. Members of the BOC freely inquire into all aspects of the projects, often in minute detail, and I would like to stress the minute part. All inquiries are answered openly, eagerly, and professionally by the FBISD team and its consultants. Quite often additional taxpayers, trustees, and other members of the public will attend these meetings. The goals of the BOC for 2016 are to, A, continue to provide oversight of the 2014 bond proceeds on behalf of the taxpayers; B, be a resource to staff and consultants where appropriate, including comment on issues or changes that may arise; and C, provide input for the benefit of taxpayers, trustees, and staff on Phase Two of the bond proposal. And that's respectfully submitted by Stuart Jacobson, chairman of the BOC.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Do you have more to share, Mr. Dupree?
Yes, ma'am. I have a full, the presentation that we talked about. I can just go ahead and read right into it. Okay. Good evening, everyone. As you see on the screen, we're going to go over the same report that we went over with the bond oversight committee. And this is called "The Value of Project by Schedule Phase." If you go to our website, on the left side panel on the homepage, you would click on 2014 Bond, and then click in Monthly, Bond Monthly Reports, and this would be under the Executive Survey, or Executive Summary, excuse me. So you can find this on three clicks of the website. Now, the reason that we're showing October 8th and January 7th, there's nothing magical or special about those dates, but those are the dates that we had the bond oversight committees on, so that's what those dates represent. Now, what you see here, these pie charts represent the, as they say, the project by sched, the value by phase, and those phases are not started, pre-design, design, construction, and district-wide total. These change, obviously, as we move forward and we progress. Things change, obviously, from October to January. On the not, on the pre-design, the reason we have, everything has now been moved out of not started to pre-design, so every project is now being touched or has been touched. This total represents the Phase Three projects and the career and technology projects, so that's the value of those. Those are in pre-design. In design phase, those are the project phases, projects in phases one and two. The construction total has changed due to a window film project at Elementary 46. And then the district-wide total, that, what that is, that's sort of a catch-all category for parts of the bond that are not assigned to a specific location or that are being managed by FBISD. It includes things, on the note here below, you can see it includes things like the transportation, technology, land, bond support, security camera infrastructure, and the classroom additions that were put on hold due to the, when we realigned the campuses. And those are Sugar Mill, Palmer, and First Colony. What's also shown in the district-wide total, as you will see, the bond total has changed from $484 million to $484 million with $14,153. That represents the interest income on the bond. So that will be always shown in the district-wide total. So this data is contained in Prolog, which is our project management information system. And so all the data behind these charts can be found on page nine of that monthly report rolled up into the program cost report. So at your fingertips, you would have a report that shows the detail behind all of this data here. So moving right along to the program budget cost status, the, this slide represents commitments and actual costs that we've spent to date. Now, so commitments for purposes of this slide, it means a purchase order is in place. Oh, I'm sorry. So on new construction, that represents professional services and the construction amount for Elementary 47. Renovations and additions represents the professional services only because there's obviously no construction cost incurred on that yet. And then the district-wide total has several items, but the lion's share is bond support, land acquisition, the technology portions, and transportation. And again, all of this detail can be found on page nine of the executive summary on our website. So what that looks like in the master budget is we have committed, meaning purchase orders are in place, excuse me, for 18.3% of the total budget, and we have actually spent or incurred cost on 30.7 million, which is 6.3%. The cost to date is 6.3%. Regarding the master schedule, we are overall on schedule. Coming up very shortly, we're going to be putting the procurement on the street in this month for the district-wide civil and civil package and site lighting, followed in February and March by the new, the new elementary schools and middle school 15. Now, a note on that, in order to spread out the work and not overwhelm our ability to manage, oh, I'm sorry, gosh, Elementary School 40, Middle School 15, because they're on a contiguous site, will be bid at the same time. The vendor will be able to bid on either or both as a package deal, but we're bidding those at the same time. And then Elementaries 49 and 50 will come along the following month. And then again, on classroom additions, same thing, we're spreading it out so we don't overwhelm our ability to manage. As you remember, we have six campuses that we're doing classroom additions in, two, two, and two, they're all prototypes, so we're going to bid four in one month and two in the following month. And then just wanted to make a note on the schedule that, you know, the board approved the conceptual planning for the career in tech in December, and that is scheduled for completion in 2018. This is a, this is a very important slide. This process, called Scope-to-Budget process, has to do with our life cycle and deficiency items that we're moving forward with. The, back in, back in summer of 2013, we had a facilities assessment, and then it was reported in December of '13. So we started with a facilities assessment, and it was used to define the life cycle and deficiency scope. Then after we got the design teams on, on contract, we, they were contractually obligated to perform this scope-to-budget process for each campus. Now, this is a prescriptive process. Everyone's doing the same process so that we get good results. So what they did was they took those life cycle and deficiency lists for each campus and put them on a spreadsheet, and then actually went out to define and investigate what those deficiencies were. Now, there's, the deficiency either still existed or it had been corrected. And so as they submit their findings to us, they give us findings with photographs and narratives, quantities of each item, and revised cost estimates and possible alternatives. And so what, I wanted to give you an idea. For instance, there was one campus where we had, on the deficiency list, there was a deficiency of some electrical switchgear that needed replacing based on age. So they went out there and the, they investigated it with an engineer, and the engineer said, you know, we need to, instead of just replacing this without testing it, they actually did some forensic testing, did some infrared testing on it to determine that the switchgear actually didn't need replacing, but there were some lugs and some things inside the switchgear that just needed some maintenance. So that's, that's how we proceed with this. Now, probably the most important part is the approval process. So at the end of this process, the project manager and the executive director of design and construction, and the principal of the building sign off on what those deficiencies are and what the scope, the final revised scope will be. And so the reason that's important is, again, because that assessment was conducted back in 2013, so there have been some things that have changed. They've either been fixed, or they've gotten worse, or there've been some new things that have come up. So we have what's called above the line, and those were items that were identified in the 2014 bond on the list from the assessment. And then we have what's called below the line, which are new items that have come up. And we do not plan to act on those items until we see how, you know, until we see what our budget is to complete all the items that were listed on the 2014 bond. Once we get done with that, we will be able to see how far below the line we might be able to go and get some additional work done. So accomplishments since the last bond oversight committee. You know, we had previously developed an architect, a standard architect contract, and now we have developed a standard general contractor contract. Also, all Phase One schematic design packages have been approved. The Phase Two architect and engineer contracts have been executed and notice proceed issued. The A&amp;E firms for the elementary schools have been released to proceed into design development. The A&amp;E firm for Middle School 15 has been released into design development. The board approved the conceptual planning for the career in tech, and we, we released an RFQ for architectural services for the career in tech. We actually received 10 responses last Friday. There are 10 firms that have submitted for that work. We are meeting tomorrow. The committee consists of Kristy Whitbeck, Ginger Carabine, Kenny Kinzora, myself, Oscar Perez, Ashley Dixon, and Ann Howard. And our hope is to have those scored by January 22nd and bring those back, bring a recommendation back to the board in March for consideration. We also talked about a construction update for Elementary 47. I am very pleased to say that we are on schedule for the July 21st substantial completion, which makes us about 40% complete with construction. A couple of the milestones include the interior masonry began installation in October, exterior in November. We have air handler units that have been arrived in November as well. Many of them have been installed. Very importantly, the roofing also began in November. In three of the five construction areas, the roof has already dried in, so that's very important. Final structural slab is scheduled to be poured this month. We had a little rain delay on that. And permanent power is to be provided to the building next month in February. Our next steps, as I just said, are the architect selection for the career in tech work, the design phase for the career in tech work, complete the design for Phase One projects as we showed you the dates that those will be bidding. And then, of course, we've already gone over the procurement. And then the scope-to-budget will proceed for the phase, the same scope-to-budget process will proceed for the Phase Two projects. The next slide has to do with our small business initiative, and Bob Fazackerly is going to speak to that.
Well, let me just jump in. We, we had several slides on this that we, that we talked to the group about, but you all had already seen those slides in the prior presentation, so we just have the one graphic in here. But we talked to them about the plans that we have, the kickoff date this month for the program, and all the plans and all the outreach that we're going to be doing. So it was, it was quite a good discussion.
Thank you, Steve. The next couple of slides have to do with other projects, and for the Information Technology Department, Long Pham was going to speak to these slides.
Okay. So what you see here is, if you remember, there are three, four phases to the information technology installation, one of which is the cabling of the wireless and the security cameras. And then after that, we go into the various communication closet, and then upgrade the power, and then install the equipment, and we turn it up. So I won't bore you with that. I'll just jump straight to the meat of it. It's what have we, have we done? We have completed pretty much all the way up to about five high school left. Our next scheduled turn-up is Travis High School in about next week. Probably during the week of the 18th is when we turn it up Travis. And Austin High School followed that, Bush High School, Hightower, and Progressive. So we have done quite a lot during this fall semester, if you will. During the break, our staff were, took down the data center to prepare for the installation of the core network so that we can start installing the data storage. Right now, we scheduled on January 30th to take down the whole entire network. However, we found out that we have, might have to move that because we have a couple of conferences that teachers are going to be attending on that Saturday, so we're probably going to have to defer that. That is needed to take down so that we can prepare the core network to install the data storage that we need for the security camera. But we have to find, it is very difficult to find a, an open weekend. But we, we'll continue. So the security camera, we have completed Marshall, Kempner, Elkins, Clements, and then we're, we're going to turn up the security camera for Willeridge. When we say turn it up, they are online, our police department can see it, but we don't have storage to store them because we don't have the capacity yet until we install the storage inside the data center. And then everything else is, we're continuing to build out. At the same time, right now, we are starting to cable the middle school, so we're continuing to do that.
Thank you, Long. Regarding transportation, the board approved 80 buses back in October. We've received 25 of those buses, and we anticipate the rest of them to be delivered by the end of March. And our GPS installation is 100% on all of our buses, and that has been, been a very, very good thing for the transportation department. The next slide is the communications plan update.
We are our best source of news. I think you'll, we'll talk about that in a few minutes, but as far as like our bond communications are concerned, we've sent out quarterly reports. They're digital, but those incorporate all the news releases, a lot of the news that we've sent out already about the bond. It's that quarterly update that kind of puts that all in one package. And then our monthly, the monthly project updates on the bond webpage, we've been monitoring those to see how many people are actually reading them. And our plans are now, we've been sending links to those, but we're going to beef that up because we want people to keep progress, you know, see the progress on all these reports. We measure all this, you know, through our website, and it's real interesting when Dr. Dupree talks about the bond or one of those updates goes out, we have a real spike on people, you know, going to our website to see all this information. So a lot of, there's a lot of really good resources through those project updates, and so our goal is to drive people to see those so they'll know what's going on with the bond program. And we have a plan to do a printed piece that's just a really kind of a progress report update to mail out to the community. And so that's where we are with it.
Thank you, Nancy. The last slide would be with Steve Bassett and the debt service fund update.
So we, we gave the committee an update on where we're at on the debt management plan. We told them about the refunding that we had done last fall. That was the 39 million in par that was refunded for the 2005 bonds. We talked to them about the savings there, and then we structured it such that we're paying 15.6 million in debt early while we're still striving to lower the tax rate. There's been some more economic developments that may make sense for us to move up the timing of the refunding of the 2006 bonds, so we talked a little bit about that. And then, again, brought up the plan, we're refining the cash flows so that we can figure out when we're going to start needing to borrow again. You know, we issued 85 million, 100 million total, 15 million for 2007 bonds, 85 million for the 2014 bonds. So we have, we have that cash, still spending on that. We will start needing new money this coming fall, and so that's when we'll, you know, implement the, the commercial paper program and have that rolling along until we fix that out with a new money issue sometime in probably 2017.
Thank you, Steve. And that concludes our presentation for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cleaver and Mr. Jacobson. Do we have any questions from any of the trustees?
Yes.
Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Bassett, what, when you say in the fall of 2016 we'll begin the commercial paper program, could you, what does that mean exactly?
We, we talked about the, you remember some time ago, I think it was last April, when, when we had Raul B. Senor, our financial advisor, he talked about, introduced the concept of commercial paper to the board, and then we discussed it again during the fiscal policy that was updated in August. But to refresh everybody's memory, what we're trying to do is, is lower our overall cost of debt by matching our cash flows as much as we can to our issuances so that we don't have a lot of issued money just, just sitting there, you know, for a long amount of time. And so the, whenever he was here, he was talking about the much, the lower rates that you can get by issuing commercial paper for 30, 60, 90, up to, up to 270 days. And so what we'll do is that as we, as we need to borrow, we'll borrow that up till, you know, about the 80 million range, and then we'll set the date for when we'll actually go to the market to fix out that debt over the long term, over more years. And so it's a strategy that, that he's used in some other, in some other districts, and so this is something that we'll be, we'll be doing this coming year.
So that's short-term money?
Yes, yes, sir.
That you ultimately replace with long-term financing?
Yes, yes. We'll be fixing that out. We'll be fixing that out after we, after a certain amount of time.
Okay. Thank you. And then, Mr. Cleaver, one question I had was, I was confused because it looks like in the program, it says you're going for procurement for Middle School 15, but also at the same time, it says they've been released for design development. I just was confused by that. Is that ready to be issued for CSP? On page seven.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that, that will be ready in February, February, March timeframe to be released for procurement.
Okay. So they've been released in DD now, but by next month or March, they'll be 100% CDs?
Yes, sir. They were, I don't have the exact date they were released, but they've been released since the October, between the October bond oversight committee and the January 7th, they were released for DD. I believe it was before Christmas break, before winter break.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions?
I just have a quick question.
Ms. Ellinger?
Is it me? I think that's my microphone. Sorry about that. You stated the people that were on the committee to do the evaluation of the, I think it was the CTE program, is correct. Are all those FBISD employees?
Yes, ma'am. Every, every one of them is a FBISD employee. And we, we thought it was important to have representation from the curriculum side, from the facility side, and then also Ann Howard from the project manager side. This is on, but it's not working anymore. Hello. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. Because I do remember, I think in the last evaluation, we had Jacob's engineer was part of the evaluators.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just wanted to, you make sure that, you know, where they stood in this process.
Yes, ma'am. They will, they will not be included in this process.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Ellinger. This is Tossan.
Thank you. I had a quick question about the communications plan. So you said that we're keeping track of how many are reading the updates on the website. Was that, was that what you said?
We monitor, that is Google Analytics. So we want to see, you know, are our messages getting out? Because like when we send a communications, like one of the quarterly reports out, we send it out through multiple ways. We send it to staff, we send it out to parents, we send it out to the community. And we know that just sending something out, you know, doesn't necessarily mean that somebody's reading it, so we monitor those analytics. And in fact, as the, as the bond becomes more visible, so we noticed, there was a photo, there were some photos of Sullivan Elementary, and we noticed a lot of people were seeing that. So, you know, a lot of the planning has gone on, there's, there's not as much visible kind of evidence of
Right.
... the bond program. So we know that through video, through the photos and all, we just want people to know they're interested in their schools, when they'll open, and some of those projects is, and so those are the kind of things we monitor, is we want to know, you know, are people reading our publications? Do we, you know, need to do something differently?
So do we have the data on that? Do we know about how many people are actually going out and clicking on the links or going to our website? What does that look like?
We do. We looked at the overall bond page because, you know, we, we go to the page through different links, you know, in articles and things like that because there's sections on the bond page we want people to see. And so we know like about 5,000 people. There was a period, we looked over the summer to about December, and we know about 5,000 people looked at it. And, you know, it's, it's new, so we're trying to increase the number that do that because we know that there's a lot of really good information in those monthly reports especially. And so we just want to make sure that people are accessing that information.
And did we have an expectation going in of, or do we have an expectation of how many hits we want or how many people we want looking at it as we're sending out this information? And know if we set goals or if we're trying to get more people to go and just, you know, we talk a lot about making sure the community's informed and making sure they really know what's going on, and particularly with the bond. I know the board's been, you know, particularly, it's been particularly important to us, so I just didn't know if we had set some goals, or are we looking at increasing that, or is this about where we thought we would be?
Well, we know the analytics for other pages, and it's not as high
Okay.
... as some of those, you know, parents are really interested in things a lot of times to do with their own children. And so that's when we noticed that those monthly reports come out, you know, mid-month. And so that's when we noticed that those monthly reports come out, you know, mid-month. And we weren't seeing as many people reading those. And actually, one of our bond oversight committee members is real interested in that too. So we're carefully, it doesn't seem like people are, are reading those monthly reports like we want them to. So that's where we come up with other strategies and to try to get those out to more people.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions, trustees? Well then, thank you, Mr. Cleaver. Thank you, Mr. Jacobson, for being here tonight.
Thank you.
And everyone who helped you. Just ready for the next item.
Yes, ma'am, the next plan is going to turn to Nancy Porter again, our Chief Communications Officer. As you know, communications has been a major focus for the board and the district recently. And in the last couple of years, we're really just trying to more effectively engage all of our communities and communicate very effectively. And so Nancy has worked with her team to put together a plan. And like most of the other plans you've been hearing over the last year, we want to share kind of where we've been and where we're going. Still lots of work to do, and you'll hear about that work, but I'm excited about where we're headed in regard to communication. So I'm going to turn over to Nancy for her report.
Thank you. A lot of the detail that we've put together is in this, you know, the draft communications plan. And so I'll refer to that, but this is a pretty high-level overview of it. And.
What they want.
Well, and I just want to say, Dr. Dupree and board members, I'm really excited to talk to you about communications. We've got a great team, and there's a lot of good things going on. And yes, we are focused on continuous improvement. Our work is never done. And when we were looking at what, what do we really want you to know about this plan? And it's, it's student-focused, because we realize we need to help all students succeed. It's meeting stakeholder expectations and delivering exceptional service. And I just want to go to that meeting stakeholder expectations. We have a communications audit, and it was done in two thousand and nine. And you may think, well, that's a long time ago. But they're done by national, or ours was done by National Association, INSPIRA, National School Public Relations Association. And they do them every eight to ten years, because they're based on stakeholder expectations. And you can imagine that it takes, sometimes it takes some time, like our campus websites, for, to get the resources and the staff to meet those expectations. Because we know we all have them. I know that you probably have not participated in some of the groups where we get information from that. And we're available to meet with each of you, because we know that your stakeholders too. We like to hear your, you talk to people, they have questions and all. And like, we'd like to hear your expectations and things you're hearing from other stakeholders. Because that'd be real valuable to us in our planning. And I'd like to introduce our community relations team. They're here tonight. Or some of them, most of them are here. And we have sixteen employees, fourteen full-time and two part-time. And our Fort Ben Education Foundation shares offices with us, and they have three staff members that we work closely together. There is kind of more detail, a bio on, on the people I'm introducing you to tonight and just things that they do. But let me just introduce our team. First, Stacy Cruz, if you can stand up. She is our Director of Communications. Amanda Babella, Amanda is the Assistant Director of External and Media Relations. Becky Walker, she's our Brand and Graphics Design Coordinator. Natalie Rivera, she's a Communications Coordinator, but she's our Digital Communications Guru. Pamela Shaw, Strategic Partnerships Coordinator. Karen Miles, she is our Communication Specialist that works with External and Media Relations. And Tonya Thomas, she's a Communication Specialist for Internal Communications. And some of us have worked together for many years, others are fairly new. But together, we have a real talented team. We enjoy what we do. We work hard and we want to get it done. And when we talked about those three things, you know, helping all students succeed, our work, our student focus is, is based on the core beliefs and commitments, the mission, the vision, district goals. And these all work together to help us form action plans that are really like our strategic roadmap. They're focused on building up best practices, continuous improvement. I can't say enough about we want to help each of our students be successful. And ultimately, our, our mission to inspire and equip all students to pursue futures beyond what they can imagine. Talked a little bit about stakeholder expectations. And sometimes, you know, the information we get as far as like e-communications, I mean, it shows that we're our best source of news. The emails we, you get, the telephone messages, the parent portal, the websites, all those are preferences. And, and over, we did a survey in two thousand and eleven and fifteen, and we've just seen that the new mix to it is people want text messaging. And we'll talk about that. When we're doing our plans, we do a SWOT analysis. We don't just look at our strengths, we look at our weaknesses and the opportunities and the threats when we look at it. We have to. And, you know, a lot of the, the data that drives our insights are digitally based. We have a lot of, we've been working on a lot of systems that give us that information. And it helps us to prioritize, like I said, our communications preferences. And also, we know that as good as technology is, face-to-face meetings and, and all of our community engagement efforts, that, that's the real place that we need to go with all this, if we're going to bridge those gaps. In fact, a lot of the group that Addie is in, it's bridging the divide, that's over in the Willeridge feeder pattern. We need everyone. We can't do it alone. And so like I said, we have plans, they do these audits. INSPIRA recommends them every eight to ten years, so we have a plan to do it in two thousand, next one in two thousand and seventeen. But we want to hear from y'all and your expectations before then. And we look at delivering exceptional service. We have a lot of wins. I mean, we win awards and things like that. But, but for us, when we can see changes happening system-wide, those are our greatest successes. And I think just amazing, it's been amazing to see staff morale improve over the last three years. And the, the bond, and there were a lot of bonds in this area, and ours was one of the highest margins. And you overall, you may not, not, this, one of the researchers said, it was truly amazing that our climate surveys showed across all the dimensions and the stakeholder groups that our district was stable and improving after the first-ever district-wide feeder pattern and boundary plan. And those aren't always easy to do, are they, Mr. Rosenthal? And, and it, and one of the, one of our stakeholders are our district leaders and our, and our principals, and we work with them. And it means a lot to us for them to give us high grades. We all like to get good grades. And that's a group that it means a lot to know that they feel supported by our group. When you talk about, we, we worked with a consultant to really look at our department and where are our strengths and weaknesses. And we made some organizational changes based on that. These are our five key areas of responsibility. And when you look at internal communications, one of the biggest ahas from Charles is listening tour. And the rollout of chat with Charles is that we had some real issues with our employees in internal communications. It was to our researchers, it was just really amazing that a majority of the concerns were coming not from the community. They were coming from our staff about our district. And so we've really focused on internal communications, a lot of our events, and media and external relations. Each of these, I could talk to you a long time about each one. I'm not going to. We have a wonderful, talented person. We brought one of the media inside our fold, you know, and she's great. And we had a really good focus on that. Brand management and creative services, we just have a wonderful person leading that effort. Digital communications, like we talked about, and strategic partnerships. One of the frameworks, we want you to, and when we work on all of our plans, they're really the modes of communication. There's the responsive, proactive, and interactive. And as you can imagine, have you seen those emails on any given day? We need to be ready to handle anything that comes our way. And we don't want to spend a lot of time there, because that would just be not work out. It's insubstantial in today's news environment. But you can see what goes on there. We have a great spokesperson. Proactive, and that's one that's really difficult. It's one that's really important. It's essential. We have very complex issues, and people want to understand our decision-making process. And I know a lot of you get emails, and we know that's the area of improvement. You'll see later, I'll talk about that. And then the interactive, that's not only digital, but that's looking at who are those people that, you know, are, don't have the digital technology? And so we work with our Title I coordinators, our principals, and parent educators to just consistently look at the way we're communicating to our schools to see how we can improve. And we talked about areas of improvement. Proactive communications, we're, we're all communicators, all of our, throughout our organization. And there's some systemic issues that, you know, we're working on. When you look at some of our weaknesses that we come up with our SWOT analysis, it's, it's difficult at times to respond to a lot of the organizational changes, just the sheer volume and, you know, what we deal with, and, and just the nature of how things, issues we monitor. And something may be something that we're just looking at, and all of a sudden, it becomes something that's a larger issue, you know, that we need to deal with. We want to be able to look at these issues as they come our way and be able to, and be on top of them, and be out there before them, basically. And other things that we consider are weaknesses, just the sheer need for additional resources. Like I mentioned to you, even the INSPIRA audit, it takes some, a while to build the resources and look at the way you're organizing, organizing your team to be proactive. And as you can imagine, just this first semester, our group has served on thirty different workforces just to improve the line of communication with our instructional and operational staff. And we just need more time, plan out that time, so that we make sure we're on top of all of our plans. And, and interestingly enough, there's a lot of, there's, there are people in our group that are close to retirement. So there's going to be some, there's succession planning going on and cross-training and all that. And you look at the opportunities, technology continues to improve. And a lot of the systems that we have in place really help to maximize our, you know, our resources. Another thing, and I, and I mean this very sincerely, we're very fortunate to have a leader that's a good communicator and can connect with people. Consider that a strength. When you look at threats, look at Mr. Rice, a lot of the school finance issues are ongoing. And just the lack of trust and support from education, that public education is always a challenge to get our message out. And as well as rumors, misinformation, sometimes it's disinformation that, you know, we continually deal with every day. And just want to go over just quickly a couple of these. I talked about proactive communications. We're excited about a new monitoring system that's helping us combine different features that we really need to really look at sentiment analysis and just to be on. It's an improved way to monitor media and social media. We're excited about that. And straight talk, I, I, you know, we did our straight talk video about the budget. That can be in communications. A lot of the things that we've, we give you maybe as talking points, or they're just like, like what is our district's position on that? We're working on some, a straight, a straight talk projects to make it easier for people maybe to understand some of these complex issues in our decision-making process. And like we mentioned, the embedded strategy. And then just the gaps. I mean, we've got some gaps in where we are and where we want to be as far as communications is concerned. So we're looking at those and trying to work within, it may be programs or maybe departments and just different places to see how we can close those gaps. A lot of it has to do with the expectations of our community. So those, and, and we have a little matrix that we work with, you know, on issues that just kind of help us see, you know, where, where our highest priority is. And this is an interesting project. We all know that the campus websites have been on the horizon for a long time. And are identified in two thousand and nine. But just to show you, sometimes it takes a while for the resources to catch, and the technologies improve, that really in two thousand and eleven, or two thousand and nine, this is an audit point that we came, that we, our parent, everybody wanted, especially new campus websites. So we've been working on that, and that, that is not right. That, that project will be completed at the end of December two thousand and sixteen, not seventeen. That horrifies me to think of that. Anyway, those, that's one example of sometimes it takes, it takes a while for the resources to be in line for you to do these projects. And then we talked about our source of news. School Messenger is one of the communication systems we work with. And it's surprising to see, we just looked at how many messages were sent out. We talked about some of the communications preferences. Since the beginning of the year, there've been about twenty-five hundred unique broadcasts or unique messages created. And there were about almost half a million were delivered by voice, and four-point-eight million emails were delivered. Well, you'd be happy to know that we're working with technology on a project now that parents are going to be able to go in. It's early as February, they're finishing up this project, and they can select their preferences. If you don't want to get voicemails, you can say you don't want to get voicemails. If you want to get texts, you'd rather do that than email. So we're, that's something we're glad to roll out, you know, and it adds that text message feature too. And social media, everybody, social media is a big part of what we do. It's, it elevates the sense of urgency in what we do, and the information, misinformation can travel quickly. It's interesting though, that as, as much as we all use social media, it's one of the least preferred ways that parents want to get information about their child through social media. Also, the radio and television are least preferred. So right now, as far as our plan is concerned, like I said, we have a new monitoring system, and we're going through a policy review. We have everything set up to do most anything we want to. But it's how you manage it, how you manage that content, and making sure that you're, you have the staff to do that. Right now, a lot of our staff, or at least one full-time equivalent, is tied up with the campus website project. That's going to end. We'll have more staff there. And we have plans, we have our Facebook page set up. We have plans to launch that next year. This is a huge piece, improving community engagement. We talked about how we cannot do that alone. So we're working on plans to really see how do we support our campuses and departments? And how, how do we get our message out? People don't read things a lot of times. It's communicate, communicate, communicate. It may take as many as five times for somebody to read something before, you know, they actually remember or acknowledge that. So we understand people are busy, and we want to be able to communicate in ways that help them and help our children be succeed. One thing as far as, we look at similar school districts, we look at best practice, corporate practices when we work here. And we've been working with a National School Public Relations Association as a real talented person that has some really practical ideas on engagement that we've been working with. And we mentioned that a communications audit. You know, the big piece here is we know that if we really accomplish our mission, we can't do it alone as a school system. And like I say, we're just ongoing, focused on developing our team. They're wonderful. But there's just a, a lot of ongoing professional learning, collaboration, cross-functional team planning. And as far as it, we're focused, we know, probably any of you could say, you know, why aren't you doing this? Or I would love for you to do this. And we want you to hear you say that. We know that there's a lot of areas for improvement. And any given, given day, we're, we deal with those. This is, I just want to leave you with, this is the vision to me of someone who is really an expert on how we work to engage our community. She said engagement involves more than simply delivering a message. As a bridging process, it includes list. As a bridging process, it includes listening, researching the issues, and working to find agreement between the school system and stakeholders. It represents a way to increase collaboration, identify issues, solve problems, and develop strategies to improve schools. It nourishes a sense of ownership and responsibility in the stakeholders who realize they have a say in the process and it builds trust in our organization." We know that trust is a big issue and we know that the greater the trust, the better job we're doing. We want people to trust. Our action plans, we are focused on analytics. We use from National School Public Relations Association. I say that name again, but they're really leaders in what we do. And they have evaluation rubrics that we look, look to for, to measure our progress. They're aligned with Baldridge and just national best practices. We thank you for your support through the policy and the work that you do. And it's very apparent that each of you care deeply about our schools and we thank you for that. And thank you for the resources that you make possible for us to do our work. And like I said, I'd be glad, we'd be glad to meet with any of you, just to discuss your ideas when we have more time. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer those.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. I'm sure we do have some questions or comments, Mr. Rice.
Just a comment. Thank you very much. Very excellent presentation and thank you for the very professional way you and your staff communicate with our community. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, well, Ms. Heller.
I actually was going to say the same thing and I think I noticed that when I checked my son's website, it was already changed. And so that was a very good surprise for me this week. So thank you all again for all the hard work that you all are doing.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, well, thank you so much. Thank you, Mrs. Porter, very much. Thanks for all your efforts in this presentation and putting together the plan.
Next up, it is time to begin planning for the 2016-17 school year budget. So as we typically do this time of year, Steve is going to begin with a high-level overview of kind of where we are and where we expect to go over the next six months. You know, this is a process that begins now and ends in June with the board adopting a budget. And so Steve's going to get us launched tonight with a, hopefully not too lengthy, report about the, about preliminary planning for the budget process.
Well, I am down to 13 slides, so.
Is that a record for you, Mr. Bassett?
Maybe, it just might be. But thank you, Dr. Dupreeh, members of the board.
You get 15 seconds per slide.
Okay. I do have terrific help here from Ms. Edgar. She'll be chiming in as needed, especially if we, if we get into some, some questions. So the, the first thing is to get into the, you know, the state of the state. But before I do, it's interesting, some of the national economic news hasn't been really good. And so, you know, that's a lot of new developments, especially with China. I mean, I know Dr. Dupreeh and some of the others were just there, but that is, you know, what's happening nationally is going to affect us from a, from a state perspective. The school finance lawsuit is obviously the big topic. There were some folks that had a lot of experience, thought that, that decision would be announced before Christmas. That obviously didn't happen. Since they've waited this long, they probably will wait till after the primaries, which was some of the original considerations. The longer they wait, frankly though, the, the less likely it'll be that there would have a special session that would do anything to affect our funding for 1617. Although, I mean, we could still hope, but it's probably more likely then at that point that, that wouldn't do anything until the, that would affect our financial, financial equation until the regular session in 2017. I do want to talk about sales tax collections, just show you some analysis we've done on that and then also the, on the oil and gas. So this slide, I mean, you may need to look at your, your handout, but what we're looking at is on a year-by-year basis, how the average sales tax collections have progressed for the state. And sales taxes make up the, the most important component of the revenue for the state. And so the concerning point is if you look at the top row, the top row is for the 2015 amounts. And you can see, I mean, we are collecting more every year as a state, except that you can see that the, the slope has actually started to decline in terms of the amount that's being collected from, from, from the state, by the state on a monthly basis. And so you can see, we definitely did have a decline back in 2009, which led to our last budget, statewide budget crisis. And so this is something we're keeping an eye on. The slope of that decline is not as profound as what we saw in 2009, but, but it's definitely something that, you know, worth keeping an eye on. We look at this information regularly in the Texas School Alliance and so we're, we're keeping up, we're keeping up with this. So just, just so you know. This last, this next slide shows 12 months of the price of oil per barrel. And, you know, if you added 12 months behind that, it would have, you would have had much, much higher numbers than these. I mean, these were the, the little bit of a peak that we had when we had some, some rally in the, in the oil prices. Of course, we're, we're back down to some really low levels. I was very sad the other day when I filled up for a buck forty-eight in, at Buc-E's outside, you know, on my way to College Station and it was a buck forty-eight. I was just amazed. And so, so anyway, while I'm glad in the short term that I'm paying less, in the long term, it's, it's going to have some, some real impacts.
Thirty-one fifty per barrel today.
Okay, all right. Well, on that happy note, I'll keep. Wow, okay. So we, some financial pressures, I need to make sure everybody understands. I'm going to talk more about local value growth on the next slide. You know, with the whole harmless, they've, they've made some changes into the template and the, and the state's also trying to hold districts harmless for that increase in the exemption from fifteen thousand per house up to twenty-five thousand. That was voted on by the, by the taxpayers throughout the state in November and it was passed as expected. And so what we're seeing from the state isn't, you know, I, I've been through this before when major changes have been made and it takes the, the state a while to kind of get its act together in order to help us forecast things. And so right now, things are maybe looking probably more optimistic than I think they'll be. We're not sure as whether or not that's just because we are dominated by residential property as opposed to other districts that may have not as generous of a mix in that. So we're keeping an eye on that, but we expect the refinements in the model as we go forward. Of course, new campus startups are, are costs are going to be affecting us. We have Sullivan opening in 1617. But even more importantly, I'm keeping an eye on 1718. We'll be opening, you know, three elementaries and possibly the, the middle school 15. Transportation considerations, we'll be talking about the instructional day soon. You know, right now, we have in between the levels, we have 40 to 45 minutes in between the various levels. You know, we start off with high school, then we go elementary, middle. If those get tightened up, if those times in between the levels get tightened up, then we may have to add routes. And so that's, you know, one of the things, you know, I'm keeping an eye on. IDEA, we're trying to maximize that grant, of course, but it is having an impact on the general fund. I'll talk more about that here in a little bit because we finally have spent down some of the excess fund balance that I think we've had in the, in IDEA. I've mentioned this before, you know, the unfunded technology plan. I mean, we, we definitely, you know, set aside a significant amount, thirty-nine million in the 2014 bond, but the total technology plan, you know, was for just under seventy million. And so we, we have to figure out a way, how are we going to fund all aspects of the technology plan? There are unfunded capital needs. One of the things that just comes to mind quickly is vehicles. You know, some of the, there, there are aspects of our budget from the original budget cuts in 2010, 2011 that we haven't completely made up for in our, in our general fund budget. Vehicle replacements, one of those, because we do have some needs. So let's talk about property value growth. This is one of the bigger drivers of, of our situation. So again, this isn't just showing our, our value overall. This is showing the year-over-year percentage change, which I think is better from an analytical perspective. And so as, obviously, growth is, is better than declines. But what, what happens, because remember the, the state value, CPTD value is a year behind, okay? They use, you know, the, the year behind. So what we're going to be getting from the state in our CPTD value later this month is going to be based on the large growth that you see here, this large growth amount, okay? But our local value, we expect to only grow about this level. So this gap that we're estimating is, is really worth about nine-point-three billion dollars. If we had the same growth year-over-year, then we wouldn't have a decline, you know, the state wouldn't be clawing back some of those funds. Of course, you understand with that formula, as our property values go up, the state's share goes down. And so, you know, hopefully, right now, we're forecasting nine percent growth. I mean, we think we're going to have a soft landing. We're, we're not going to go just immediately to, to zero value growth. So, because we haven't seen that in the past. But, but anyway, we're thinking that this, this'll, this'll come to fruition and so we're keeping an eye on that. We'll be very interested to see what the, what the state gives us in terms of CPTD and that happens this month, okay? So in February, we'll be able to, to update that, that information. So the good news is that 2015-16 is, is looking very strong, okay? So why is that? On the downside, we, we're down about 200 students, okay? But our WADA, what's going into the system and what we get paid on is actually up higher. And I, we expected that because we brought in the consultants, the DRV consultants, we've been working on our coding, we've been working on getting, making sure we have the data and that is manifesting itself in a higher WADA than what was expected. Again, the WADA is that weighted average daily attendance, which is one of the main drivers of the formula. Our local revenue is of course up higher because the certified values are higher than what was budgeted. You know, it's higher than, than we anticipated in the past. Payroll projections are on target. Utility savings, we're expecting, we are expecting some utility savings. Overall, the, the trajectory is favorable for, for 1516. So that's good because we're going to need those savings, you know, to help us with some, a lot of one-time items in our planning for 1617. So in thinking about our planning for 1617, we, before the break, we got our, our growth projections from PASA and we're looking at seventy-four thousand, hundred and five students. Average daily attendance, ninety-six point seven percent, which is what we're realizing now. We're projecting local value growth of the, of nine percent with the state coming in with 12 percent. So again, that delta there between nine and 12 percent is worth about, you know, three million for every, every percentage point. We're going to be opening Sullivan. We have, whenever you add kids, we're going to add new teaching positions, whereas our early estimate is 50. We have the non-teaching positions at Sullivan. You'll get more breakdown of those, but it's similar to what you saw last time for Madden Elementary. So here's IDEA. IDEA, we're going to need to be absorbing 2.2 million into the general fund. So whenever I arrived in 2013, our balance in IDEA was very close to an entire year of entitlement. And so, I mean, the recent guidelines, well, there's, I mean, there's, there's guidelines that the, that the feds have where you're, you have excess balances if you're over the, the 25 percent. And so we're, we have been spending that down and so we're going to be leveling out. But during the past three years, in order to spend that down, whenever we've been adding resources to special ed, we've been funding them through IDEA because we needed to spend down that balance. In this plan, the numbers you're going to see in a second, we are including a, a raise for the, the teachers in the form of the step, just moving them up the step. Doesn't mean we won't do more, doesn't mean we won't do less, but this is just what's included in the numbers that we're going to show you. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about a compensation idea I have here in a minute. And then also, we look at the staffing ratios, you know, based on 22 to one, whenever we're, we're adding, adding teachers. And then also, we know we're adding to other payroll because some of the discussions we've had on resources needed for the IR campuses. So here's our initial look at 1617. I mean, you can see our actuals from 1415 breaking even. We anticipate 1516 having a, having a surplus in excess of five million, so that'll be a good thing. And then 1617, we pretty much see us breaking even. You can see we have some work to do in, in order of balancing that out. We are going to be working together as a group to, to be doing that. We spent some time last June talking about, you know, fund balance and managing the fund balance better. There was, there were concepts that I showed you on looking at the fund balance, kind of the items below the line. You remember that discussion whenever we were committing things? And so what I want to get into next are just some of those fund balance strategies. So you could see, you know, things like textbooks, major maintenance, loss of state revenue, you know, that one month's worth, transportation, new schools. Those are things that we talked about, setting aside fund balance and, and shifting those into prior years to help us manage some of the, some of the ups and downs of our expenditures. Well, some of the things that we're going to, you know, thinking about, I mentioned that, you know, we have an unfunded technology plan. And so, you know, we always have a need to, to put some money there. We're going to have that need for a while. Vehicles, we need to make up some of the, some of the shortages that we've had in vehicles. For example, I mean, the chief's told me a couple of times, he has his alarm techs going out in double. I mean, you've got two techs using one vehicle. And so they could be more efficient if they had two vehicles. And so there's, you know, that's just an example of one need. Because 1718, because of the, the, the economy and, and how dour it's looking from a state perspective, I'm starting to get nervous about 1718. And so, you know, we'll see how things progress and we're obviously adding a lot of expense because we're going to be opening, you know, four, four schools. And so one of the things I'm worried about is doing too much to add to ongoing expenses going into, into that year. And so one of the things we're thinking about is that if we could do something in the four 1617 that was more along the lines of retention supplement, retention bonus, where it's a one-time, you know, payment to employees. The district has done this before. I've done this in other districts that I've, that I've been at. And so anyway, we're, we're making some preliminary estimates of what some of those numbers could look like and we'll be, we'll be talking about that more in the future as well. Okay. So, you know, we're always looking at how we can improve the numbers overall. Again, that's an expenditure and revenue side. I've spoken about these and you've seen some of these items in memo form. We have seen some improvements on the utility side, working on the, on the sub-expenses. The potential instructional day change is off the table for 1617 because we just, we have so much going on with the instructional day as Dr. Whitbeck will be talking about. But that could be something we'd look at again for 1718. Working to automate the time and attendance. Summer school, we, you know, trying to do that as efficiently as possible. And then you can see some of the things we're doing on the revenue side. But we're definitely seeing coding improvements on PMS, which is, which is definitely helping in the numbers as we expected, so we're happy about that. Of course, our budget process is very collaborative. The BCC is active. We have a meeting with them later this month. They'll see this presentation and, and some more detail on some of the ideas we have. But of course, we have representation from, throughout the district for that. We discuss, we get a lot of budget feedback from principals and directors, teacher forum. And of course, the benefits committee helps us keep an eye on that massive piece of our budget on, on the benefit side. Okay, so timing of the budget development. We will be bringing forward our first pass at Essential Campus and on-campus staffing requests in February. We'll be looking at a lot of redirecting, you know, how can we redirect a lot of our resources, you know, given the, the numbers that you saw there? Then we could be looking at other staffing changes in, in March. And then, yeah, I mean, optimistically, we'll see what happens if there's a session, but we'll be talking about compensation and other requests as the rest of the spring progresses. And that is it. We've got questions and some amazing graphics there. Wow.
I know. You guys are getting really fancy. Do we have questions, Ms. Heller?
Yes, thank you for your report. Is there a written report that can be read and kind of get more information of what you presented today?
No, no, we don't have that. We don't have that in a, in a written document, I mean, per se. I mean, I can certainly, you know, I haven't had a one-on-one with you on, on school finance and such. And so, I mean, I'll be happy to, to meet and talk with you about it so you can, you know, see more along the lines of, you know, what we're thinking and, and why, why we do what we do. But I don't, I don't have a document, you know, per se like this. We do have the, you know, that fiscal policy document that was adopted in August, which drives a lot of what we do. And that is a, a, a multi-page extensive document that, that the board approves. But, but in terms of just putting this together, we, we don't, we don't, I don't have a document like that. I mean, listen, can you say anything like that? Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, so in order for me to get more information on what you said, because it was just a lot, a lot for me to.
Sure.
Swallow today, so I guess I'll have to make a meeting with you.
No, I mean, and, I mean, I'll make myself available to you. I mean, whenever, I've spent a lot of time with, with, with the other members of the board, especially the new ones when they came on, you know, individual time, because it is a, school finance is as complicated as any industry I've ever been in. I've been in several others. And there are people that have been looking at the, the state funding template and things like that for a long, long time and still haven't figured it out. So it's not, it's not for the faint of heart.
There is actually a document that exists. It's not in particular about what we presented tonight, but it, it is a school finance 101 and it's excellent source. and it's excellent source of information. I refer back to it often.
Okay.
And I think it would give you a lot of information on how this all comes together.
All right, so, thank you. I'll definitely look forward to reading that and meeting with you. I guess from a, from a, when you say update, there's normally, I guess I'm used to more documentation, I guess, to kind of read, just kind of do, read and understand the explanation that you provided today, that's, that's what I was looking for.
Okay.
I do, I think it's important to note that we will, as we start putting the budget proposal together, provide a document that'll be much more thorough.
Okay.
And that, that will come sometime, maybe probably in March or so, as we start solidifying the actual budget proposal.
Okay, so maybe that just kind of lines up my expectation, then when I can, we'll see that type of information.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good, good questions. Mr. Rice?
I, I thought you were going to say that school finance was as difficult to understand as the NASA launch sequence for the space shuttle. But, but you didn't. But, thank you, Mr. Bassett. But I, I just had a couple of questions from my own edification, and that is, on page five, when you're talking about the financial model, financial model accuracy and reflection of hold harmless, that's, that's the state portion of school funding, the hold harmless clause, which actually, in, at least in 2010, that was a misnomer because it didn't hold us harmless. But, maybe I could-
Well, just to, so-
-touch on that a little bit more?
So, the, again, we had the vote in November, the, the state put together the legislative session, and they put together the budgets for everybody, knowing that we were going to have a vote in November to change the exemption, potentially change the exemption for each house from fifteen thousand to twenty-five thousand in order to cut property taxes on a statewide basis. And so, they said they were going to hold districts harmless to do that. And so, you know, how they've done that is, you know, adjusting CPTD values, but also adjusting the template to make sure that, that, that funding isn't lost to us, because we aren't collecting as much from, from all of our, all of our taxpayers. And so, I'm certainly not expecting us to be held harmless on the, on the debt side of things, okay? I mean, I'm, you know, I'm really being very conservative on that, and I think that'll, I think that'll serve us well. But it does look like there is additional state revenue above and beyond what we would have had before the law changed. And so, we're just, we don't have a lot of confidence yet in, in the state model and how strong it is yet, because we, Dean and I have both seen, as laws change, it takes, it takes a while for it to get worked out before you really have something that's reliable.
And I, excuse me, I wanted to add that the first iteration of the financial model with the hold harmless came through, and we were short. And then they came up with another model, and now we're higher. So, you know, we think that there's going to be some more releases available before we finalize.
So, those are models the state came up with?
Correct.
One's short, one's high, and so, it leads you to wonder, where are they really?
Exactly.
And that's consistent with what we've seen in the past.
Okay. Next question, on the IDEA grant maximization. IDEA grants, we're getting from the federal government, is that right?
Yes.
So, how, how, if we're trying to maximize that, are we're still going to have to make up two point two million dollars?
Yeah, the, you know, since, unfortunately, what we, what we got in the entitlement this year is actually less than what we got in 2010, 2011. I mean, we, we've actually seen a gradual decline, you know, in that entitlement as opposed to anything that keeps up with the expenses, because we've been giving raises to the folks that are funded that way, and of course, you know, we have more expenses in that. And so, we had a fund balance that was almost to the amount of that entitlement in thirteen, fourteen, and so, we, we started to, we started to spend that down. And so, you know, it definitely looks like the feds are going to continue the program, but we're not expecting them to, to have increases in it. And so, in order to maintain, you know, a, a, an acceptable fund balance, we're going to need to absorb some of the positions that we have into the general fund, if that helps.
Okay.
Ben, we could certainly, you know, give you breakdown on that, but I mean, we, we've had it to add, I mean, since thirteen, fourteen, we added five speech pathologists, four diagnosticians, and fourteen, fifteen, three teachers and ten aides, and then this year, you know, eleven, eleven teachers, eleven aides. And so, you know, we have, we have been adding in, in order to, you know, meet the needs of the, of the district, but then also to reduce that fund balance.
Well, that's something I think that we should try to communicate in our, in our communication plan, because I think the federal government established that in sixty-five, and they have never funded that. And when Kristen and Mrs., when Mrs. Tassan, Mrs. James and I go to Washington, I'm going to be happy to share that with our legislators, because what I hear you saying is that we're having to assume more and the more of the costs, and I think those programs are good to have, but realizing that's a federal law, and, and incomplete or partially funded by the federal government. And I just want them to know that, and I want our citizenry to know that we're fulfilling that law, and we're making up the difference here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, page six, growth rate and assessed value, and this is the delta in the growth rate, and this is, this is what I heard you say, Mr. Bassett, and I just want to make sure I'm correct, that in fifteen, we had a big jump in the central appraisal value, value.
Yes, sir.
But next year, we won't have as big a jump.
Right.
And so, it takes the state, we get the benefit of that delta for twelve months, and then the state catches up, and because this gap is more pronounced, then the gap from the state is even more, right?
Well, I, I mean, you could, you could look at it that way. I mean, I, I think it's, we, we know that the, that the state is behind it here, and so, as long as you're always moving up, the state will never catch up in terms of percentage basis. But once you start going down, the state does catch up in that, and they, they reduce their share of state funding.
Okay.
And that's exactly what's happening here.
What's the percentage of funding that we get from the state compared to our local? Because I thought we're more like, we used to be maybe fifty-two percent local and forty-eight percent state, and I think that's widened by another four percent.
It is going, it is going up. We don't, we didn't, you know, we're trying to keep the number of slides down. I mean, we, we didn't update that slide, but-
It's shifting, for sure.
It is, it is increasing in terms of the, the higher percentage locally.
What, what would that be, Dinah?
Hmm, I don't, I don't know the percentage.
So, locally, what's our percentage?
We'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll get that to you.
We'll have to calculate, yeah.
We'll get that to you. I don't want to just speculate on that.
Utility saving, page seven, utility savings are expected. Is that because of energy conservation projects? I mean, are we, are we talking-
Combination.
-electricity and, and gas?
Combination, yes.
Combination with that.
And see, we've also, we've also just been putting the word out to employees, you know, that-
Turn the lights off?
Right.
So, how much, what's our savings been?
It's about five hundred to six hundred thousand.
A year annually?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, then on page eight, the property value growth, you've got nine percent from the central appraisal district, twelve percent, what does CPTD stand for?
That, that's the, well, it's, it's the comptroller-
Property Tax Division.
Comptroller's Property Tax Division.
That's the state value.
So, the difference in that is three percent, and is that what, what you're talking about?
Which equates to the nine point three million, that's right.
Shortfall?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, the comptroller will administer their, their values on, at the end of January, so we will know for sure. That twelve percent is an estimate right now, but I can tell you that there's huge swings. If that goes up to thirteen versus eleven, it's millions in one direction or the other. So, that's a very important value.
It's very, very important, okay. Then other payroll, and for the improvement required at the campuses, that was for the additional professional development days?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And when we open a new school, last question, I know that we've got bond funds for FFNE stuff, but you're talking about the costs associated with staffing those schools.
The, the initial startup, you know, you have, you have principal, you have those fixed positions, and so-
And so, we've got to carry that burden until we catch up and are getting the, the WADA for the student enrollment.
Right.
Absolutely.
So, we take the hit for the first twelve months. We've got to have enough capital to cover that.
Right.
Okay.
Now, we are getting assistance, what came out of the eighty-fourth legislative session, but it's not a lot. It's the new instructional material, new instructional facilities allotment, and it's a couple hundred thousand. So, they're, they're giving us a little bit of help, but not much for that new school startup, year one and year two.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Mrs. Tassan?
Is that two hundred thousand per school?
It is, it's an allotment per child, so, the first year, you get, do you remember? Is it two fifteen?
It's, it's two hundred and fifty per child that's in a new campus for, for year one.
And then the second year, it's growth, so you only, only-
Additional.
-get additional, yeah, for the new students.
It's better than nothing.
Yeah, I mean, it, it does help for-
Because there's been nothing in the past. I mean, there's been times where it's-
Very positive of UC. So, yeah, so I had some questions about the IDEA stuff, because it's my understanding that that's about forty percent funded. Is that your understanding, or do you know?
Hmm.
Because I'd like to have some numbers. Last year, it was forty percent funded. Is it more than that now, or less than that now?
Well, let's, Dr. Hill to come up.
Are we talking about forty percent, that the federal government said they would fund, and they didn't know, it's never been funded up to forty percent. I believe the last time it was like eighteen percent. So, the feds have always been extremely behind what was allocated, or was promised, and what's been allocated.
Okay, I would like to have some data on that before we go next week, because I think last year, the numbers we were given were about forty percent. It sounded a little high to me at the time, but, yeah, so I think we need some pretty, we need to get some accurate numbers on that. So, yeah, I think they were going to approve it, but they're not adding any money, at least they're not discussing that at this point. So, that's going to be important for us to, to go up and talk about.
And I'd be happy to give you guys some talking points, because there's some other factors, I think, that as we begin, the reauthorization of the IDEA is coming now that the ESA is passed.
Right.
And there'll be some additional things that I think would be important to share.
Well, and how that, how the two tie together, because I don't know what funding's going to look like for ESSA, so we probably need to, I mean, see what that looks like now that No Child Left Behind is gone.
Right.
So, okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, are the additional, the two point two million you say is moving to the general fund, is that all personnel?
Yes.
Okay. And is that something that we anticipate, I mean, that's not going to stay the same, it's going to increase. Do we think that's going to increase as we, like-
I, I mean, it really just depends on the, the entitlement that we get from the, from the feds. I mean, if, if, if it, if it's higher-
Assuming it stays the same.
Yes, assuming it stays the same.
Okay. Because we're, I mean, we're opening new schools, so we're going to need new special ed teachers, we're going to need new LSSPs, we're going to need new personnel. So, do we anticipate this continuing to increase if, I guess, assuming that the entitlement stays the same?
Yes, yes, our, our general fund spend on special ed, well, we anticipate that going up.
IDEA cannot tolerate anything additional right now.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
The IDEA grant cannot tolerate any, anything additional right now. It's strained, so that's, we are, we're having to relieve it now. So, you know, I mean, anything new coming on would have to come on to general fund.
So, I would be interested in knowing how we're going to deal with that in the future, because I think that's going to be something that we, that the burden's just going to increase on the school district and trying to comply with that law. And, you know, we're, we, we had the, you know, we've got the new plan in special education, and so, that includes a lot more personnel in it, so I'd like to see what, you know, how we're planning for that in a budget.
Okay.
So, I think that's it. Mr. Rice took all my other questions, so, thank you.
Mr. Rice took a few of my questions too, but I do have one more. On slide seven, you talked about that our actual enrollment was under the projected enrollment by an average of two hundred students. Our projected enrollment, are those, are you talking about the moderate growth or the moderate range projections? Is that what you used, and how does that compare to the low-growth projections that we-
That's an excellent question. It is based on moderate, we budgeted a moderate, or most likely. This average of two hundred students below is based on the first and second six weeks average. If you pull today, just enrollment today, we're not that low. But that's not how the funding formula works, they, they do base it on the average, so that's why that's there. I mean, I think that'll probably end up trending more favorably, but our weighted average daily attendance is up because of the coding, so we're actually doing well in that regard.
Right. But I just, I also want to understand, because I know we'll start talking about student projections, and this, of course, goes into our budgeting, but also our facilities and all these other types of things. So, I, I'm just curious to understand a little bit more about what those projections, what, what we're using as our model, and then, and what those projections really mean, where we are on the continuum, so.
Okay.